Yeah.
Do you have where that's for the workshop?
At first, I was worried how fast they acted with this kind of thing.
Holding in my thoughts, somebody like hit it and like torn it up.
Yeah. That's what it looked like.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll kind of go ahead and get started. Or not?
No, we're good.
Okay.
We'll open the workshop at 5:34 and I'll turn it over to Scott.
So, yes, Scott, as we established.
You know what?
Scott, Scotty.
I heard that 15 times the other night, so I made sure to tell you. To say it, to say it right.
So, the, the kind of the purpose for going through this stuff, and this is just informal discussions, to kind of figure out where we are. Obviously, we're, we're moving forward playground. We're at a point financially where we understand where we'll be with that. We have some work done on the, preparing for the bond issue tonight that will fund the majority of this. But with that, there are several components that just need to be talked through. Not really decisions to be made tonight unless we get to that point, but just kind of talking points so we can start making decisions in preparation of ordering equipment and everything else we're going to do for that. So, the purpose of the night is just kind of talk through some things. Nathan Chance with the Recreation Group will be at the meeting on October 7. So they'll, we'll be able to talk price, numbers, order dates, all sort of that thing to make sure we're, we're where we need to be. The goal, as we sit here tonight, is to place the order for the playground equipment no later than Thanksgiving. So that gives us about two months to get to a decision on ordering equipment. Whatever we're going to order for the playground will be ordered before then. And talking with, with Nathan, again with Great Southern Recreation, we're looking at a 60 to 90 day delivery date. And we would, the invoice would be payable at the time of delivery. So from a pure scheduling standpoint, what, what we're looking to do to make sure everything works the way we think it will be is, is we've all discussed a grand opening on July 2nd, which is on a Saturday. July 3rd event will be on Sunday. Obviously, a grand opening on July 2nd to kind of make it a, kind of a full weekend of events. If we stay on the schedule for ordering equipment in November and it arrives roughly February, mid-February, then Nathan and I have discussed this thing and we think we could have the playground installed by the, by the end of May. That gives us about a month, maybe six weeks to get that work complete. And then kind of let May and the completion of the installation just kind of be a soft opening. Not something that has to be advertised. Obviously, the July 2nd is the grand opening. But the soft, soft opening, once we get everything built, installed and done, that gives us a few weeks for it to flow, function, make sure everything works as, as we think it needs to work. If we miss something, small repairs, and there will be things that get, that get missed. It's just a part of the process. But that puts us with about a 40 day window, 45 day window to make sure everything works the way we think it needs to work. So when we do grand opening, it's a full, prepared, ready to go grand opening. So, that schedule seems to hold for us right now. I don't see any reason why we would back up from that schedule. We may be a little ahead on it, but we certainly wouldn't have to back up on it. So with that, there are some things that we just need to talk through to make sure we're getting what we say we're going to get when it comes playground time. Obviously, there's been a, a design or concept that's been approved. We have the, the big board there and obviously it's just.
This, this is, this was the concept that was, that was adopted by, of the U C and it was adopted. So, I'm not aware of anything that's changed from, from this concept. So, with that, there will be some things that we're going to have to discuss and figure out. We've had questions about fencing. All the components and materials are going to be installed, how all of that works. So, tonight is just kind of a think out loud discussion for where, where are we going to staff and order equipment and all that. So I get back to Nathan, we can have a true dollars and cents discussion three weeks from tonight. So that's kind of where we are on, on that thing. So, I'll, I'll just sit this here. Unless you guys sit in the seat, we'll just kind of talk through, talk through what that looks like.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
And if the concept would be of the picture, we overlook handicap accessible way up. We make contact with Nathan, I don't know if we finalized that. It was about the same time that the city came up with the $600,000. So, I don't know if that was finalized with you.
No, we, we, we haven't finalized anything. That's the purpose of talking through all this. So, I'm not sure where the ramp is. That's kind of where we're talking. I know you, some of you guys are on the Playground Committee, so, so if we have information to do that, I just don't know.
We, we didn't add any other structure, change anything other than ask Nathan to add a handicap accessible ramp for the older kids of the, of the 12th structure.
And that, and that ramp is inside the footprint of the playground or getting to? Okay.
Yeah. So that they can get up on their knees at the first and swat.
Gotcha, okay. So, so assuming that that, that becomes part of it and it should obviously.
That's one thing on our checklist.
So, so we'll get with Nathan and make sure when he comes in three weeks that we have, have that discussion. So some of the questions that have come about, just so, other than the scheduling, some of the questions we've had, and I'll run down this list and kind of let everyone know where I think we are on, on these. Just because it's where I think we are doesn't mean it, or make it so. But we want to make sure we stay on this schedule for, for this project. So, so with that, I'll run down a list. Commissioner Butler sent me a list from the last Playground Committee meeting. So I'll just run down a list, let you know where I think we are on that and then kind of talk out loud for some of these to kind of get us moving along. So, the first question, and I don't have an answer for this, is the fencing. The timing, material and cost. The timing is easy. Obviously, we have time to, to install fence. My suggestion would be that the fence be the last piece of the component that goes in because of the construction that's going to take place around that. So, just from a, from a logistical standpoint, it seems to make sense to have the fence be the last piece of the component to go in. That said, I think this, this meeting has kind of discussed that. What are we talking about on fence? What are we talking about as far as materials? Look, that sort of things when you get some guy.
Chris has got information on the fencing. She wanted to say something to you guys about. She's been working kind of behind the scenes, so she's got some.
Yeah, sure, we're, that's what we're here for. No, you have to stand up and sing a song that we all know.
Okay, it's a whole day of talking to people who have come to the project. We've had a touch with Kelly Shalos, who lives in Goodsville. And she, they use Leathers, which was originally this company, well, that used for our original playground, which they are now using all composite materials for their playground. With that said, the company that they used through Leathers was a company that will, you give them how many pickets you need and they will engrave it. And they use, so it's, it's composite, so you pick the color that you want. And then they will engrave it, which I would really love to see happen for the community of Fairview because, you know, they can't afford, most families can't afford $20,000 for a component. So they can afford $35 for a picket. And I went out to Goodsville and saw it and they're, it's beautiful. They, it's done very nice. There's no like monograph, it's just strictly lettering. And they use epoxy, which is like a rubber glue. They put inside the engraving and you don't have to do anything to it. It stays permanent, it looks fantastic. They use black, she said, because she thought it looked nice on the, by the burn finish. And this company called Bedford Technology, they ordered 830 pickets for their playground. They charged $30 a person. And with the epoxy, it was $8.35 per board to engrave it. If they wanted the epoxy, which we do, if we get that, it was three extra dollars. For basically $11 is what cost with me, including the price of the picket. And we can charge anywhere from $30, $35 per picket, which would completely pay for the entire.
So it's 1125 per board? Does that include like your four by fours, your installation, all the other fence material?
That was just for the picket, but they also have all of the other, because they bought the whole fence packet from this company and then they shipped it and bought it back.
Does that company install the fence?
No, they're in Minnesota.
Okay.
Or I think it's Minnesota, not positive. I did not call them because they said, because you came in right on the wire.
Okay. So the, the first question around fence is budget material? So we can try and make sure, I think the biggest question was, have we fundraised enough? Do we have enough to incorporate it? If we're going to start another fundraiser, we just need to try and probably put a time scope on it. Say, yeah, if we're going to pursue these pickets, we need to do it within the next month, two months. That way we can get that fence ordered. So it's here in May for, for, and we can figure out installation or pricing and stuff like that.
I think they will sell in high case.
And the Playground Committee is well, ready to take that on?
Well, I have something, not really bad, but just kind of a thought. When we originally, Nathan originally gave us a price with the fencing included. We had to take the fencing out of the, of the model of cost. So I'm pretty sure it's not this company and they, it might not be as fancy. But I'm pretty sure Nathan will have that information. They actually went out and measured and gave us a price on how much the fence would cost to put in.
And do they do a similar imprint, engraving?
That I'm not sure of. So that might be a, a discussion to have with Nathan, with Nathan to see what all is involved with. These, these guys.
I've seen that before.
So, so purposes of this discussion, are we, are we talking about the fence being a part of the playground project as we know it for the footprint? Are we talking about the fence being?
The perimeter fence, yeah.
But I mean, is that, is that, we have $750,000. So are we including the, the fence as a part of the 750 or is that a separate fundraiser?
That's, that is the question of the first line. Do we need to continue? I think the last budget we got was like $698. And so we were at around $52,000. Does that capture fence? Does that capture grade? That's what we're kind of trying to get. You know, do we need to continue to push a fundraiser? And if, and if this is one that we can do, maybe we, we push this hard and it pays for the fence or so, or gets close.
Sure.
And if I understand correct, there was originally, the price of the fence was included in our, the, the budget originally, the proposal, the quote or whatever. And then you had that, you had that removed. So I would have. Correct. So I would assume that the numbers we're working with today don't include the fence.
Right, right.
And then I guess we would need to just know, sorry, I guess we would just need to know the square footage that we need, how many pickets we do need.
Think.
She, she sent me an email, but it was 730, it was 739, I think, linear square feet. I don't know what that means. Feet, yes, there you go. Length, so I don't really know. I know that there's like eight feet between each four by four post. You run two, two by fours to the backside, you put 13 pickets with like an eight inch spacing. Or no, is that less?
Three, three and a half inches or less.
Okay, right, right, sorry. So that was like, I didn't really do the math on that, but, and so, but they have a very large playground. And I, I was trying to compare that to Fairview's playground. Ours is bigger, so they, she said she sold 830 pickets. So, I mean, we could definitely want to know the exact number that we could need. And then.
So, so if she's, if her, if her playground is smaller than ours, just for her numbers, if she sold to 800 and whatever that you said at $35 apiece, that's an additional fundraiser of a minimum of $30,000.
She said they profited $3200 after all was said, or 200. Eight hundred, which paid for everything, but still.
So you're, so you're saying they paid for everything and then on addition to that, they got, okay.
So, so for purposes of this conversation, as, as we're going forward, it sounds to me as if the fence is a separate standalone project from the playground itself, the play space itself.
But the goal would be to have it all tied up July 2nd.
Sure. But for purposes of playground itself, the fence is a, a separate project to make sure it goes. Just so I can get my head around where numbers are.
We just want to make sure financially wise, we're at, we are where we are. So, so maybe tonight we say, do we get like a aluminum fence price and we price this? And we say if we say, sell 500 pickets, we can pay for it and have a better understanding of next meeting. We go, yep, let's proceed with this fundraiser and start selling pickets and then order the fence by the end of the year or something.
If, the easiest way to, to make sure we're kind of getting there is we can put that information out for bid. So we can draft a bid on that and say, look, option one design would be whatever design that there is. I don't know if, I don't know where they bought those, those items. I don't know if those were bid, if they're on a co-op that, that they got. So I'll need to figure that stuff out because there, there's a little bit of wiggle room that we have to determine there.
I think the biggest goal is to make sure we don't hit February, March and go, we don't have enough money to order a fence. You know, we're, we're 20 grand short or whatever.
So, we could go out, put that out for bid with a couple of different costs. You could do the, the aluminum material that, that appears to fit. You could be, you could bid those. You could do just the installation. Right?
Yeah, because we'll need just that for the material though.
Sure.
Any idea when you'll have a very good estimate or close to contract prices? A lot of the playgrounds going across and say, without the fence, so we have an idea as to.
We're, we're hoping to figure that. That's why Nathan will be here next week. The, the purpose of this is for, for this discussion to be had so we know what we're trying to purchase within the, within the playground dollars. Get that information to Nathan, see what that is, get that information back and then go. Right now, we're just all over the place to try and figure out, so.
Well, I, I do think that Nathan has all the figures as far as how, how, how many feet, how many, he has everything. Since I was part of the original.
Yeah, I, I have a note right here to email Nathan and ask about the fence later.
Yeah, and he might have, and I know he's worried about, you know, I know he's collacked in because they've done numerous playgrounds. I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that he has different wood, whatever component, different component, everything's. It doesn't have, I think, I think everybody's pretty much in agreement that we don't want wood fence necessarily. We would want something else, probably something a little nicer, something that would last a little longer. I'm pretty sure that he has, I know he has how, the size of the fence. I'm pretty sure that he, he would be able to provide the different costs for different types of fences.
Well, and one thing you need to see is, is that the size of the fence, the old footprint or is it doth it footprint that would include the zip lines? Is the zip lines outside of the?
If Nathan had all the dimensions according to the plans or approved and the pictures, we just didn't know what material and if it was going to be a community build or we were hired to ask. So we kind of did that last hour fundraising bill that.
Yeah, sure, so.
There was the city coming over saying, hey, we're going to do the bulk of it. We said, okay, we talked to $30,000 more to do the fundraising. We had decided to be real, the city gave the final say, so we were trying to kind of slow track it a little bit on the lumber.
Yeah, sure, sure. So, so I'll get with Nathan and find out exactly what it is he's talking about. I'll also have to get with Nathan and find out what they actually have available through their, their co-op in their bid. Because there are different, different little materials to do, depending on what they have, we'll see what that is. But until we hear back from him, for purposes just of the conversation tonight, the fence would be separate from, from the playground project until we learn differently where we are.
I haven't heard anything about the bricks for baseball. Is that still one?
On the list.
Yeah.
On the list, we're getting there.
I was just curious, just curious.
Sure.
Only because this would just bring, this is just a little piece that.
Yeah, we're getting there. All right, so the second, or one of the other questions that came up were sidewalk and ADA compliant. The city will take care of that. That will make sure that the sidewalk works and does that thing. There are two options as, as it exists. The first is the sidewalk that makes its way up to the playground now. That, that sidewalk, we don't believe is ADA because of the slope. So, we met out there, we had a couple of conversations to kind of go through that process. And what we, what we know will work, that seems to make sense, is leave that sidewalk as is because we can't grade all that out. There's no way to remove that and make that ADA. Because the slope is still the slope, you're still getting to the playground. So what we talked about doing was if you walk up to that sidewalk and you see, you can either go up that sidewalk and get in where you want to go, or you would go to the left because the slopes is a little more gentle there. And we would go to the left and if we had to turn it back to the right, the distance you go may be a little bit further, but it would be wide enough, obviously ADA to make the turn. And your slope would be below eight degrees. Slope on a sidewalk ADA compliances, eight degrees up and down, two degrees left to right. So you'd have to go in, you could either go up if you chose to go up, or you could go left and then zigzag with one turn, go to the left, to the right and then make your way into the same. Gets you to the stop. So, so if, if we get to that point, that's what we need to do, then the city would just amend the sidewalk that currently exists and install that there. So that work would not be included in the playground dollars. We would find those dollars separately. Well, we could, we just have to replace it every few years. So we'll, the sidewalk will be separate from that. That's kind of a separate footprint project. So that's, that's relatively simple for us. Before we, let me just hit the simple ones real quick. There was a question about tree maintenance and playground, tree maintenance related to the playground footprint. That's all city, we're there and do all that. That's easy, that's just General Park Maintenance 101. So there's nothing, nothing to that. A question about site prep, timing and cost. Obviously, the site prep timing is, is concurrent with the playground timing. So however that, however that works, it works. We met this afternoon to talk through some of this and there's some material still in the ground from the old playground. There's some netting and some other stuff that needs to be removed. It, it was in there pretty deeply. So rather than disturbing all that dirt and see what we're doing at the time that this comes about, who does the work will be dependent upon what work is needed to be done. If it's just simple remove and replace, and we're talking about to install the, the flooring, right? Because there may be some requirements to install the flooring that are different than just putting it on top of some dirt or, or other material out there. So once we get that information to go back, we'll either use city staff to go in and clear that to make sure that works. Or if we're not able to do that, then we would contract professionally out to that, come in, install the materials, make sure that we have some warranty in base for that thing. That would be a part of the city's cost outside of this fundraising effort or the playground effort as well. We're not trying to include dirt, we're trying to get as much play equipment as we can. So we think if we had to go in and do that work professionally, we're between $5,000 and $7,500 for installation materials, grading, removal, all such that comes with that. So, the, the flooring, the dirt work would be the city's, not the, the playground project. And the sidewalk would be the city's, not the playground project. So, again, $20,000 is a piece of equipment and we don't want to spend that money on dirt. And there's, we have some flexibility in the budget with some miscellaneous capital project work that we can do, so. Another question was out about bid. We've confirmed with this, the Great Southern Recreation in and of itself does not have the bid. Nathan Chance's group does not have the bid for this. The way that this work is done is through a purchasing co-op called Omni, called Omni Partners. Omni Partners is a purchasing co-op recognized through the state of Tennessee. And you can purchase any number of items through Omni Partners. Omni Partners Co-op has bid all of these projects or all of these pieces of equipment. And that's how you're under the bid through the Omni Partners contract. As an example, we would go through Omni Partners. They would be our, our contract vendor through Great Southern. Great Southern would then be the Omni Partners vendors to do that. We also do the same for Dell Computers, right? Dell Computers are not on the state bid, but Insight IT is on state bid. So when we bought Patrol, our police equipment last year, we bought from Insight for that police equipment. They are an Omni Partners partner. And we are, we are already a member of Omni Partners. We already have our ID number and frequent use them. So that's not a question of how we get through the state bid, those items have already been bid. We confirm that with Omni and also with Williamson County Schools because Omni Partners and Great Southern are contract partners with Williamson County and Franklin Special School District for their playground. So that question's been answered and we're, we're, we're good there. So, with that, tho, those things are easy for us. Now we kind of get to some of, some of the other, some of the other work. So, one of the questions that was brought about was sidewalk needed for the zip, zip line footprint. I'm not exactly sure where that falls into this thing, so I just see some clarity on what, what that question is.
On that drawing, the zip line is outside of the active sidewalk. So you, you had a perimeter sidewalk before, fence inside that sidewalk from the old playground. The new zip line is outside of that, that sidewalk. So, so we would need to, do we need to adjust for additional sidewalk to access? And do we need to make our fence go all the way around that? And if so, our fence will have, the sidewalk will cut through the fence. So we need a gate, I guess, through each sidewalk side, if that makes sense. The old, the old fence perimeter would not, if we put it back where it was today, would not encompass the, the zip line. It's over closer to the nature park where the, the decorative pieces are, decorative animals are.
So just thinking that through, just from, from a park user standpoint, I would probably, if, if the zip line area is going to be separate from that, I would have the zip line area, if it's fenced, have its own fence. I would not encompass the sidewalk. Because frequently you get people walk from that, they'll park it to nature center, they'll walk over and fix, they'll go to the restrooms, they'll do some other thing. So in that case, you're going to have foot traffic, sometimes adults, sometimes kids too big to play on the playground that are walking through the playground and the sidewalk, which just entices a, a whole host of issues. So, and really the only difference you're talking about is the length of the fence that would border the sidewalk.
No, that makes sense. So just wrap the, wrap the zip line, wrap the park and have an entrance. You go down, so you can go right to the park, left to the zip line.
That's right. And, and I'd have the sidewalk be just a, just a sidewalk component that's used by the park general, not, not a part.
Nathan had it drawn.
Okay.
No, sir, it was, it was a one.
You, didn't you see it 10 minutes ago?
This, the nature center is back here.
Right.
So this is where you walk up the whole animals and such that are there.
Right.
There's the corner. So this is where there's a handicap accessible entrance there, or there was there.
Right.
This, this just goes around the backside, right over here is where the, is he over this currently? So rather than have a fence cross this or the gate, I would just fence this off and leave the sidewalk open to all pedestrian traffic. Rather than put the playground.
I agree, that's good.
One of the things that might affect this is that there's a sidewalk going from the nature center over towards the playground. And is that going to be bisected by the, by the zip line?
No.
I think that would be a little farther down. If it is in the footprint of the zip, zip line, you'd remove it and put a new, new walk path, I would say.
Yeah. So if I was a parent, I want one way in and one way out of the playground.
But the zip, the zip line's a much different user.
Not necessarily. So you're saying, like, for what age? Like, what, like, are you saying that children that are coming to the playground are going to be able to use that? Or are you saying that it's for like adults or?
No, I just think you may have bigger children over there. I think you do want the, the sidewalk to free flow though. You don't want to have to, you don't want a perimeter walker to have to come through each gate to walk through the playground that's following that sidewalk through there.
Why not make a sidewalk that goes all the way around the zip line? And, you know, that continues what we have now. We could keep that one section of sidewalk so that it's like a wheelchair or whatever can go on that to get to the zip line. But it doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, you wouldn't have to even put a, you could take that section out. I mean, how hard is it to take by feet of sidewalk out?
So, most children are not going to be able to reach up, but they're going to want to swing up. So, usually, a parent, when I was at the playground, would be there with their kids to help push them and pull them back. So, say if they had two children.
At the playground?
They're going to have smaller, probably, playing here, but they're not going to be able to, you're going to have to leave to take them to this part and then come back in. So, for a parent, one of, like, there's security in knowing there's a fence all the way around. I may not see them the whole time, but I know they're in here. If they have to leave, it just, for me, if I was, you know, I know having young children where I have grandkids, they're going to want to do this.
Yeah.
I would propose to make it all one, send this sidewalk around.
Yeah, I'm open to anything. Nobody's ever brought up adding around it to it. Just another point is if you have a zip line, somebody's, you know, kind of flying in midair going down, do you want it open to everyone else where you have a three-year-old that's trying to run through the park and may run across and get hit by somebody on a zip line?
Yeah. When we did the first playground, they had like a smaller section for younger and then older section. And so, you know, it's a parent's job to take care of her kids.
Then you get swings, a lot of dangerous. But, so I wonder this. I kind of like having one big fence around the entire thing, too. But I also like going from the nature center and being able to walk to the left. Is there not a sidewalk to the left?
There is.
That will not go into the playground?
Right. There's a sidewalk that comes from the nature center straight across, and you can either go to the left or the right around.
Okay, okay. All right.
And so, if there was a zip line there, I mean, it looks to me like the zip line would be right on top where that sidewalk comes from, from the nature center. Now, I haven't seen that, I haven't seen the footprint in relation to the existing sidewalk from the nature center to know that for sure. But, I mean, it doesn't seem like it would be that much to just take the existing sidewalk that goes here and make it bigger, maybe take out a little section here so that you can put the fence around it.
Yeah, it's about $9,000.
It's $9,000 to extend that.
What you have to do, if that's what you're doing, is you'd have to, if you're leaving the nature center, you're walking that sidewalk. When, you're going to have to, right now, the sidewalk is this. So, you're leaving the nature center, you walk, you get to the loop that goes around where the footprint of the playground is now. So, what you're talking about doing is taking the existing sidewalk, if I get there, the area to the left, removing it. You have to. You would have to. It won't work any other way.
What do you mean? Removing it for what?
If you're going to put this in there, then it's somewhere you're going to have to remove a sidewalk and install a new sidewalk. Right? So, if you don't remove it, then you're going to have that section of sidewalk in the footprint of the play area. So, you're going to have a concrete sidewalk adjacent to a zip line.
Well, which if it was actually designed that way, but, I mean, you could take it out.
So, I'm not sure it was designed. I'm just telling you from that issue, what you're going to have to do is go back and move the existing sidewalk closer to the nature center. So, you go take a left there, you go around.
Right.
The.
Playground.
You go, you get to the playground, but you'd actually be taking a left going around the zip line. The zip line will be included in the fence line part of the playground. So, you're going to have to go in and remove that section of sidewalk and then install a new sidewalk. So, that's.
If you don't do that, then the sidewalk from the nature center is just going to go, and then you've got this fence for the zip line. I mean, where, how would the zip line, how would that work?
Just a fenced in zip line with its own gate.
And then, then it doesn't go to the circle around the.
Sure it does. So, if I'm walking down the sidewalk from the nature center and I get to the playground, when I get to the playground, I have two options. I can either veer to the right and make my way down to the parking lot where the parking lot is, or I can take a left and it goes around the existing footprint of the playground.
Right.
How it's set up. So, you're going to have to do either one of two things. You're either going to have to take a left and not have a fence there. So, if I walked to that and took a left, if I do that, then when I look to my left, I see a fenced in zip line area. And when I look to my right, I see the fenced in playground area.
Right. So, the zip line would be all by itself and no?
That's how it's drawn now.
That's how it's drawn.
So. So.
So, if we tear this sidewalk out, and now we need to add footprint for, we need the paver, the rubber footprint, we're going to add to our footage for the, you know, the interior footprint of the playground.
Yeah. So, the only way you could save that money is, I think that sidewalk's four feet wide. So, the only way you'd be able to save that money would be take out that sidewalk, move the footprint of the zip line four feet into the, toward the playground, take up that space, put the sidewalk around it. So, at that point, your construction cost for that, let's call it $10,000 round figure. So, you're talking about $10,000 worth of new sidewalk.
To pour a new perimeter, to finish that perimeter there, yeah.
So, you're talking around 710, 715.
We're adding $10,000 to wherever the cost is. I don't want to speak to what the cost. Because I'm going to be quoted in the paper like 25 different times after the month. And I'm sure I'm going to be wrong for most of them. Disclaimer. So, yeah, I think you can count on adding that number. But that's going to be the only way you can get around doing that thing. We'll look at that again and see what that looks like. We can get some cost estimates on that sidewalk as well. And make that go. And I heard someone mention ADA. Your ADA compliant is four feet, 48 inches. Obviously, eight up and down degrees, left to right. My preference would be if we're going to do that, just because of the area that that is, not that you have to replace those sidewalks, but I would do five feet and transition back in to the four. It just seems to make sense to do.
Yeah.
48 inches is compliant, 60 inches is kind of the standard. Go back with that standard.
Is there, so, I'm coming in a little late. I'm sorry about that. So, if there's an entrance in, is there going to be a gate at the back to go across the sidewalk if we wanted to change it, and then into another gate to get into that? So, children could go out in the back.
Sure.
And the parents wouldn't know they were going out in the back unless they were right with them. So, there's.
In theory, I guess I could.
Sidewalk. I mean, it's not like there's like a crowd, but they can only go down there. I mean, they're, once they go out that gate, they're out.
Did we have one gate only with the old one?
The only one entrance.
All playgrounds have one entrance in.
No, that playground had two entrances.
True, but that was just for maintenance. It was just for like bringing in mold.
It was not only for that. There were two entrances to that playground. Entrance number one was the entrance that you see that goes there. Entrance number two was an ADA compliant width entrance to the back so that wheelchair access could get to the wheelchair swing back there. And that gate was not locked. It could be opened at any time for use by any person who came in. So, there were two gates.
Okay, that must have changed because there wasn't, that beginning was only there so that, I mean, that's because we probably didn't have an entrance for wheelchairs to go into.
Well, that's exactly what it was.
Right.
I do remember that as well. And I do understand what you're saying, though for security reasons. If the parent is on one side and a bad person comes in the other and skills a kid.
Sure.
You know, I do like that, especially for little kids, having one entrance. The parents know that there's one way in, one way out. Unless somebody jumps the fence and does something crazy. There is a sense of security.
But that's probably your better ADA access point on that end, coming on a flat sidewalk.
We have the ramp, right? So, the ramp is going to be coming up.
That you're going to go all the way around and come up the other way?
No.
Well, you could. In the interest of trying to accomplish, I know Commissioner Dawson's goal, how does that work? And the other, I think you could go back up. You have your main entrance where you are, right, that exists now. We assume that's going to be the same main entrance. You could go back if you're making sure ADA compliant entrance is there. You could have two entrances there that are visible beside each other, so you can go in and get that. So, let's say I do have someone on a walker, someone on a wheelchair, that you want to be able to get them closer access to everything you know they can use. Then you can go back and do those where the entrances are visible clearly from one point. And you have the luxury on this of, most of this playground has line of sight visual where the other playground did not. When you had the other playground that was all wooden structure, you couldn't see through a good part of the wooden structure that was there, particularly if you're seated at the entrance watching your children. You could see to the left, but you couldn't see into those items. This setup, if you're going to see that, there should be nothing that fully obstructs a view all the way across the playground. So, at any time, you should be able to look up from where you're seated or standing and see the footprint of the playground where previously you could not do that just because of the construction material. So, there will be all for some safety to that. So, I think worst case, you explore the second opening, not all the way across, but where you can monitor both. Go see what the cost looks like and.
Mr. Collins, can you explain one more time for me again? So, the.
Scott can.
Oh, Lord, here we go again.
So, where the current steps are to go up to the playground? That is our entrance, our main entrance into the playground?
Yes, sir.
And did you say that there would be to the left of that more of a gradual entrance for ADA compliance?
Yes. So, you can't be up or downhill eight degrees.
Right.
So, what you would, so let's say you're just getting out of your car. You're at the sidewalk and you're looking up the hill at the playground. What you would be able to do is continue to go straight, if you can navigate that. Or you go to the left, and we'd either do a circular, semicircle around that takes you there, or a zigzag that gets you straight. And you'd go to the left, less 50 feet, 40 feet, whatever the number is, until you got there, turn right and go in. If you were to take that route, let's say the topography lends itself to where you need to go further along that way, you have the option to install a second entrance there. So, if you are using a walker, pushing a wheelchair, that sort of thing, you can get there more easily. If a semicircle works and you stay within ADA, then you could, in theory, use the same entrance. You just need to wind it up a little bit.
I got you.
A lot of that's going to just depend on the lay of the land and how that goes. Obviously, there are going to be some things that must be considered. Again, I would suggest a five-foot sidewalk minimally as you go. Now, obviously, if you do a five-foot sidewalk, that digs in to the hillside somewhat, so you have to figure out what that is. But neither one of those are difficult to figure out. We just have to figure them out.
So, possibly two entrances on the left side, but they're closer. And the theory right now would be to not have one on that backside.
If, I think if the goal would be to remove the sidewalk as it exists, push the zip line in that distance, re-sidewalk around it, then you could do that, and you would just simply have those entrances there.
Two front ones.
Again, I think the overriding part of that also is to make sure that pedestrian traffic not engaged in the playground wouldn't need to traverse the playground. They would have some way to avoid that if they do, so.
My guess is, trying to think back of the research, we wanted to do minimal expense, air and that, and all that. We wanted to leave the old sidewalk. So, looking at the way the layout is, we removed that section between connected to, instead of that, it would be slightly less expensive for compacting it, but you're going to add more sidewalk around the outside edge. The ADA accessible beginning and end for the zip line is still at those corners. So, you're going to have a gate there. And like you're saying, it's relatively a rectangle playground structure. So, it should still be visible from the main little parent area that we had proposed. And I don't think, it's not going to be a huge expense either way. We're going to move the footprint in a little tighter, remove quite a bit of fencing. And I found an email from way back when it was approximately 715, living with me. So, you're going to remove a bit, 90 of it, compacting it. I think it's all going to kind of wash you to sleep.
Are there going to be trees that have to be removed if we're pushing that zip line up? It looks like, the drawing you sent me has two trees drawn, and then the overhead. Looks like it might be tight. There might be some trees there. We just have to look at it.
I wasn't sure if it was just geographic or.
Yeah.
I sent Brandon a picture. Great Southern.
That'll be the plan for now, to push for it while you do a site visit and see. But it looks like there might be trees that would have to be removed if we pushed that piece up.
We'll get out there and see. We'll put some effort in that. But it sounds like right now, the preference would be move the zip line in the width of the sidewalk, have the fence around the entire perimeter, install the new sidewalk on the outside, and the expiration of a second entrance, depending on the location of the ADA sidewalk at the main entrance to the playground. So, is that what I'm?
Mr. Collins, Scotty, Scott.
Whoever.
Bob.
Just hey you.
Scotty.
To Commissioner Butler's point, if we had to, if there are trees there and we have to remove them, are we allowed to remove trees?
In that area, because it's a dedicated area for play area.
So, that takes care of those.
There are two trees.
So, let's run down. I apologize. I'm trying to get everyone else's questions, and then we'll give some information out to make sure because we're doing the same thing again in three weeks from tonight to kind of make sure we've met every discussion. So, I feel like you're about to say something.
No, that's good.
Okay. So, sidewalk, we've addressed that. Now, the question about, city provide 100% of project management oversight, yes. That's, we, all we'll do is, we'll be the contract administrator. But that's all we do. However it's installed, will be installed. So, that's easy for us. PO date, we discussed that. That question came up. Before we get into some of the real, the work, question, when does, when do dollars need to be remitted to the city? Still December 29. That has not changed. So, the December 29 date for remission of dollars going toward the playground, that's still the hardened firm date. There's a resolution passed by the BOC. That works for everyone and still gets in there. So, what, the only thing that may need to be discussed about that is in that same, yes, sir.
Don't look at me anymore.
Okay, okay.
He's very engaged.
In the same resolution, it suggested, or it didn't suggest, it did say that every dollar remitted to the city owner before December 29 will go to the construction of the playground itself, which are the things we just talked about. Every dollar raised after December 29, December 30 and after, will go to the future maintenance of the playground. So, we may need to consider, if we're talking about a fundraising effort for the fence, that we need to determine what that is. Now, we can go back out. If, let's say we get, I don't think it'll be difficult to get fence pricing back by mid-December, right? Whether we bid that out, or we just get some cost estimates and see what that looks like. You can go back and bid that later, but we can kind of get an idea of what those are. I think once we figure those out, then we probably want to go back and adopt a resolution that just simply says those dollars that were brought into the fence need to be remitted by such and such date so we can ensure that that's done. I think the goal would be, with some uncertainty, I think the goal would be that the fence be installed before July 2nd. I don't think there'd be a requirement that it be done at the date that the playground construction is officially complete because obviously you have issues there. So, I think we need to work with that. But once we get this information, I think it would be advisable to the board to pass. So, I think we need to work with that, but once we get this information, I think it would be advisable to the board to pass a resolution suggesting the fundraising for the fencing itself, just so there's no ambiguity for where you are.
I have a question, so, my thought is, you know, it's like, you're putting in, uh, a foundation, the fence will be the foundation, they pour that rubber probably right up to the edge, maybe not, no? We're doing rubber, um, patches. Oh.
We didn't wanna raise too much.
Okay. I thought it was rubber, and we pushed up to the surface, okay. Okay, yeah, that's, okay, the fence.
Scotty.
Yes, sir.
This may be a little premature, 'cause we're gonna talk about the bricks. So, the bricks, that fundraising piece, is that gonna happen before December twenty-ninth? And that money is going to, how, how is that going?
I don't know, let's, let's, let's talk about that. Let me make sure I hit all the, the easy ones first. We went over the date, that's fine. Alright, so, so, Commissioner Dawson, let's talk about that for, for a second. There, there is one set of bricks that exists for the, all of the ones that we could, that we could save. And those are the bricks that were in the sidewalk when the playground came about. So, we do have those bricks that existed, and we saved probably eighty-five percent of those bricks. So, all of the bricks that were there previously, we have, we think it'll be wise to reinstall those kind of as a tribute to, to the playground past. I don't think there's an effort to abandon the old playground, we wanna incorporate those, and in twenty-five years, incorporate the new ones into the next playground. So, with that, I'm not sure where we are on any fundraising or appearance for how we install new bricks. Do, I've heard incorporate it with the fence, incorporate it with the entrance, and do some sort of pavers. I, I have no idea, that, that's kind of our biggest question mark, is to how to make that look, so. So, I think that's kinda y'all's discussion.
We'll say that when, when we first started discussing playgrounds, I went to several different playgrounds and took some stuff. One of the ones that came and presented early on was Mary's Magical Place over in Hendersonville. What they did over there was actually pretty cool, when you go into their entrance, they basically had, um, the, I guess, bricks, like what we're talking about, and they were done, um, kinda like, um, I don't know what it would be called, I'm not... A wall of bricks on each side, and the sidewalk going into the playground went between them. And so, you could see those bricks as you walked up, so you, they weren't actually walking on them, it was just kind of a little thing. Kinda like you'd see going into a subdivision almost, and so they had those bricks like that.
Like some lean walls.
Correct, correct, and so I don't know if that would be an option, I don't know how many bricks we have, but if that would be an option to incorporate those in, um, or not. But I, it, it looked really, I mean, if you haven't been out to that playground, it's, it looks really cool, uh, when you walk in, it's very inviting to walk into that.
Did you take any pictures that maybe we could...
I did, and I submitted those to, I don't remember who it was, Scott McCoy, maybe, um, this, however long ago this was. Yeah, but the, any of the, some of those pictures, of any of the ones of Mary's Magical Place, they did a really good job with that entrance, it's, it's very inviting. They've got, um, the sponsors, so company sponsors were also on there as well, it's lit up with some LED lights, I'm guessing, so at night, or as it starts to get dark, you can still see those things. Don't know if that's an option or not.
Yeah, the, uh, what you're talking about is, uh, there's different size, signs, based on how much money each corporation donated. So, might be smaller, might be bigger, hey, it might depend on the brick that they're placed on the wall, the layout.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and so I didn't know if that was an option to incorporate those older bricks into that, um, design or not.
Um, the mayor, I believe, is in charge of the bricks and the wall, and I don't think the playground committee has heard anything on that, so we've got no idea where we're at with that. I'm not sure, but I'm wondering what was, the mayor really in charge with that project.
Last I talked to Debbie, she said that she was gonna talk to you, and that was like late July, early August. And, uh, and then she, uh, and she said she was hoping that they would be available for people to buy for Christmas. 'Cause I asked her, will they be available for Nature Fest, and she said she didn't think so, so. She had that limited conversation, other, other than she used the person that was remitting that work for the side of the man, the whole, our limited conversation was specifically one conversation, that.
And that conversation was related to the sizing and the use of those, where the, the question was, could, would they be installed in kind of a column type? When you enter the park, what that would look like, and then the sizing of them. So, if you had a certain threshold and someone in, you know, had a certain amount of money, they would get a certain size, and then they would be smaller or larger, depending on what that case is. But, outside of that, that's the only conversation we've had, was just that, no other detail.
Yeah, close it. Yeah, that's awesome.
This is in Hendersonville?
That's what we're gonna need next, is the onus.
Yes, so, I, so I think with that, as you, as you go, um, listen, the, the brick, all of that will be very well done, obviously, that, that's, that's perpetual, that's for a long time, that's for the, the ten playgrounds that come after this one. So, you want them to be durable in some way, but I don't really see the, the brick part being a substantial cost. Given the fact that you've, you've had people who've donated already, um, the question you have to ask yourself, is someone donating to have their name on a brick? Or is someone donating to be a part of the playground, right? So, I'm not sure how much we're trying to recognize people who bought a brick, or people trying to recognize people who donated to the playground, so.
It would be fine with, to where they have their own family, it would be going into the playground, it's gonna be specifically for that brick, for the wall he built. And she was supposed to bring us that, all of this information, which we want, and we pushed her up one night, to Tabitha, or maybe this, because Tabitha can get those type of bricks that you see up there, where the corporation can put their name up there, and it's us who can set the pricing for the bricks. And, we thought at first it was gonna be part of the town, but nobody has gotten back with us, and when we went out to sell things to the community, many people who could not afford to put their hundreds in to do a pledge of five hundred dollars in the park.
That's what it looks like it does now. It's right there. And then you could do like on both sides. I think it'd be better than walking on them, 'cause I think they get damaged when you walk on them.
I mean, we're just waiting for her to give us some feedback.
Sure, now, on that part, I can't, I have no, I have no help for there.
I was hoping she would be here, because we'll take that project, if she doesn't take that project, the Playhouse Playground, uh, people will take that project and sell those bricks.
Alright, so, so, so not, not to cut you off, but lemme, lemme, lemme think through something, just ask a question or two to figure out what I'm doing, 'cause I wanna make sure what we do kind of is befitting of that, so.
Uh, I did, I did have, the last update I had from her, when I asked her about it, she had met with a local brick mason, um, out here, she, he was working on a labor price, I don't know if he's got it to her yet, and then she had an outside company that you order the brick through, so you place orders through, they'll send you the bricks with the names engraved on it, we had a local brick mason who's gonna build the wall to price it. So, what, what we probably need to do, uh, see where she's at, if she doesn't want anymore, we can take it, and if we decide to do the fence two, we can do a brick and fence post sale for Christmas presents, or something like that, you know?
So, with that, let me just get my head around where we're going, to make sure I'm... Sorry, because I'm not, y'all, y'all know me well enough to know, that guy ain't the sharpest, so, and yes, this is on YouTube, I get. So, with that, my question is, set aside the brick discussion for a second, okay? If we set aside the brick discussion, we're talking about donors as we know it today, because there's been...
Separate discussion.
I'm sorry?
Well, and now you're going to like a Packer wall, or whatever.
Yeah, so, so bricks being one thing, set that aside for a second, but now you have donors who have donated one hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly, that's been raised right now. Hundred and forty, whatever the number is. So, so, my question is, are we doing, are we taking the, tho- those people have donated to the playground specifically and put those things in? So, are we talking about taking those dollars and do a recognition of donors to the playground as a playground donor? And then, the second part of it being a kind of a participant, brick purchasers that have a separate area, is that, is that...
That's been the vision, yes, sir.
Because I don't, I don't know that, let's say that I decide that I want my family to be on there, and I pay fifteen dollars for a brick. I don't think I should be recognized in the same area as someone who donated ten thousand dollars for, for, okay, okay.
Finalize a sponsor wall, because we were, we were structured with that. I don't know, that's what I asked the city, 'cause we were, we were sitting down, trying to figure out a donor wall.
Sure.
Along with the bricks, and the city became our biggest contributor, so we kinda stepped back, so we, we don't know if anybody's come up with an idea for a donor wall, like directions.
Please.
If you're gonna use the bricks in a vertical fashion and do a wall, why not do some kind of bronze plaque or something, the donor wall is set within that brick wall, so that it stands out, but yet it still is incorporated as part of that design. And if you're gonna have so many separate signs and things going, it's gonna, it's not gonna look like, it's gonna look less. So, just combine the two, do you wanna use the bricks in a wall fashion?
Yeah, no issue, just, I just, I just wanna, my only thing was to make sure we didn't get the same credit and recognition to someone who paid fifteen dollars for a brick, as they did ten thousand dollars for something.
The long decisions that we had were kind of brick separate, maybe it's a little like thirty-inch wing wall coming in on the side where you have it on names, and then a bigger sign based off the tiers that we sold, somebody gave five thousand or ten thousand, their name's bigger, and then the name's a little smaller for the next level, next level, it was a bigger sign separate. Mary's Magical Playground has similar to like Miss Johnson saying, where it has like a stone wall entrance, and the bigger donors' names are larger and, and more pronounced, um, so you could do smaller bricks. And then, they use like an engraved stone, uh, material, where they engraved a name, and the biggest donor's name was this big, and the normal brick is this big, you know, something like that.
So, for, for this, for this discussion then, are we agreeable that we incorporate all of that? Take Brandy's, go back in, say we do the plaque, say it, say it's a nicer bronze plaque, wherever the thing is, it's inset in whatever the other, smaller...
I don't know, I, I think that's a great idea, but we'll have to get something that won't turn, so we'll have to have some kind of acrylic, something.
You, you can do.
The only, the only thing it takes us back to is location, foundation, height, cost, um, and, and that's where we kinda went away from having a big, huge grand wall, and just more of a, a finished sign or something.
Here's, here's my understanding, I might be totally wrong, around the same time that the city became the biggest governor, if you wanna call it that, is when, uh, is my understanding that, uh, based on what Debbie was doing, the city was kinda taking over that part of the project. The donor wall and all that, and the bricks and everything, but she's been working on it, uh, and we kinda backed off of that, because we were like, okay, no, we're not doing that anymore. So, we were just concentrating on...
Getting money.
Getting money. My second theory question is, now that the timelines have shifted, where it's gonna be opening up sooner than we originally anticipated, the question that was brought up the other day is, is our fundraising deadline still the thirty-first of December? Or twenty-ninth of December, or is it gonna be backed up because we're doing things?
For, for me, I, I wouldn't think the twenty-ninth would be the day, 'cause it's, at some point, we gotta pick a go date, th- this thing's gonna go on and go on and on. So, I think at some point, we just gotta pick a date, let's get this thing done, and go.
I know you talked about ordering things in, uh, next month or so.
November.
Right, so, does that change anything about fundraising for us?
See, what worries me is, we're not gonna wire now these bricks, and if we're gonna do that the month of December, and give that only to people the month of December, people are gonna be buying Christmas presents for their kids, they're gonna be doing other things, and I'm like, I was, well, I was wishing we could do it at Nature Fest, I wish we had a booth set up and start selling these things, where we're not wasting any more time, but she's got to give that to us.
Sure, well, I, I don't, I don't thi- I, I think there are a couple of other, a couple, maybe multiple conversations going on. So, so let's, again, set the sponsorship bricks aside for a second, right? I think once we get to December twenty-nine, we know who our largest owners are, and we know, we, we know what that looks like, so we can do plaque, everything, whatever material that is, and get that stuff inset and be ready to go. You could still sell bricks, alright? If someone comes in, if they're just making a donation to the playground because they want to, right? They just, I wanna donate twenty dollars to the playground, that twenty dollars goes in, and that goes into the future, future maintenance like we discussed. If someone comes in and says, I wanna purchase a brick, and it's fifteen dollars, I don't think you turn away the fifteen dollars. And I think you construct a wall in such a way where, if a year later, someone wants to come in and don't buy a brick, or sponsor the playground, yeah, you could, you could, you could do the brick. But, the only, the only question is, when is the deadline?
Right.
Because you're, you're...
Can I, can I make a suggestion, um, to contact Debbie, we're great friends, we've been together for twenty years, and I, I'm kind of an art major, make a design, work with her, just if, and find out if she wants to continue with this or not, and make a design so that you, for you all to see, brick wall, just kinda break it down, give us, uh, we have every donor, right? Do you know all the donors?
Yeah, we're gonna be, so we have all the donors.
Right, so, break that into, so I would know.
No, I agree. No, I think it's a good idea, reach out to her, and that way we know, and if we do the fencing too, we can sell those fences and bricks together, and that way we have a plan and a vision, we can get it, get it done. She did meet that brick mason on site, so they looked at some spots, some thoughts, so she's got some information that we don't have too, so.
So, with that, that gets us down to two questions of substance, and I think these will be, well, actually, one, the, the two fundraisers in progress now, the Nature Fest and the Run, continue those, yes, of course, I think we continue to raise dollars as much as we can, um, to go through that process. I think that's easy, I'm not the final say on that, but I think as long as someone's willing to give money and go, we should be willing to take it. And then, there was another question about benches, uh, two have been sold with some name tag options, um, I'm just, I'm not familiar with the bench, the benches at all.
The bench on the design is almost like a wire mesh or a smaller black fence, is a plaque gonna be able to be able added to that? If so, can we continue to sell?
Okay.
The other benches that we have?
Yeah, I, I think if they, I think if someone wanted to sponsor a bench and do that thing, if they came through and did that, and they put the money into that, I, I would, I personally will be in favor of reconfiguring the type of bench we get.
To make sure.
To make sure that that, that fits.
That's good.
I'll refer out to them when they'll be, you know, snap pictures, and they're, uh, they do have plaques, little gold plaques or gold plaques on their bench, and they're just very nice, simple, nice patch, and I, they're very, those benches have those, they're, they were black, and they were kind of like, it's not a solid seat, you know how you have the, the mesh?
Yeah, the mesh, yeah.
It's the same type of bench, I think it's the same.
Okay. So, for our purposes, the, the bench, the, the bench type and material are, the, is kind of, we can, we can work within whatever bench there is, just to make that go.
It's like Sonic, you know? I'm sitting here going, I can't think of the name, it's like Sonic, you know, if you've ever been to Sonic where they have the, the seat, it's exactly like that, they're, they're like indestructible and...
There are three in front of Publix.
Yeah.
And I, I think if, again, I think if we get to the point to where that type doesn't lend itself to what kind of plaque, or whatever, whatever recognition is going there, I think we can kind of make that change. For not a lot of money, to make sure that you get a bench that befits the, the, the use of that and installation of that, so, that, that shouldn't be a whole lot, I wouldn't think, hopefully not. And if that, and if that works, if that type works, then you use that and you save the money, for sure. Um, 'cause Commissioner Anderson's point, they last a hundred years.
Yeah, those are, those are awesome, I mean, they don't.
There, there's more vinyl than steel, the, the coating of it.
They're, they're weatherproof, and can, can I ask a question real quick, cause I know we're getting short on time? Okay, we had spoken about a covered, uh, picnic, um, area, which I think is like really important that we have. We don't want people sitting at the benches inside the, or wherever, wherever it is. Maybe, you know, that'd be a designated area where people aren't sitting around the playground area eating. And maybe with some trash can, you know, and they're made of that same material. The trash cans, cause at the middle school, they have the same exact thing as Sonic, the, the trash cans are made of the same thing, it's all indestructible.
And there are some of those outside the playground footprint now. So when you, when you walk up there, there's a trash can on either side, and if you go to the, you go to the left, there was actually uh, one bench there, there's a concrete footprint that was there, and there was a, um, one of those same tables there to the left. And if you walk to the right, there was at least one there, and then we had the, um, on, on the, on the backside of it, we had the little structure out there. So we can go back and see what those are and, and do some of those.
I just think a covered eating area would, you know.
No, no, they weren't covered, they were, they were open air, so I don't know what the, the covered looks like. Not that you couldn't do it.
Yeah, sort of, sort of like a, matter of fact, uh, Commissioner Lucas has, there's a, there's a picture in that playground of the same thing. Yeah, it's, it's just a, it's just, well, I'm, I'm not talking about the cell, I'm talking about actual, like, like what we have out there now, but, but by, a pavilion by the playground with like picnic tables, so that people can eat there instead of, yeah, just. Well, and we, we had discussed this already in, in one of the prior meetings about having, you know.
Yeah, the Carson Landscape Board, um, with last meeting we, we were at, it wasn't a, there wasn't a forum, but we just sort of discussed. And that was something that came up, and, uh, I mean, I was there, but yeah, I'm not, or the board. But, um, but, uh, there's a, um, grant that we could apply to work from, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield that might pay for something like that. Cause they want their name on the whole, that whole project, so that it wouldn't be appropriate for like, the whole playground to be the Blue Cross Blue Shield. But if they had the Blue Cross Blue Shield pavilion, I don't know that anybody would care. So that was, that's something that could possibly be done, and that's, that was something that we had discussed by.
Well, I'll give, Keith, we'll get a cost on what that would be. My, if I was gonna install one of those, just knowing the footprint and the trees and everything else, there's a small gazebo out there now that's on the, it's just between where the playground footprint is and, uh, the horse ring where it was. So if you were gonna do something there where you don't have to remove any trees, it's kind of open air already, you could remove the gazebo and install something similar there that wouldn't, you wouldn't have to do any, any work. I, I, I say any work, I did some, but you have to, you have to remove trees, do any landscaping, it's relatively flat. So we'll investigate a cost on that as well and see what, what that would be.
Cause there were, you know, there was a picnic table out there before, but I just, I just think it'd be a good idea to have a designated area where people do have lunch, cause that's what they do, they'll go out and play and they'll stop and eat lunch, bring their lunch or something.
We'll, we'll get a, we'll get a cost.
Anyway, that's just kind of something I was interested in seeing happen.
Alright, so with all of that, because we have a couple of things now to go with, with the board before seven o'clock. Um, I, I'll kind of compile all this information and get everything out. I'll get with, uh, Nathan Chance, obviously before the next meeting, we'll, I'll kind of let him know what we talked about, go through those. See if we get some change on the footprint, the sidewalk, we'll get some concrete cost for, for sidewalking, how some of that stuff works. And when we meet next time, we'll have that information available, so we'll know what those dollars look like. Three weeks from tonight, October seventh. Fully in compliance. It is one hundred percent fully in compliance. So no issues there, we're, we're completely solid, so. There's not gonna be a whole lot of update. The, the only updating that'll be, will be related to the, um, brick sales and those sorts of things. But once we get to January one, the project is, is a go. So the, other, other than delivery of equipment and installation of equipment, that's kind of really where you are. So we'll, we'll be pushing pretty hard. I don't have to know, I, last time I heard from Scott, it was a hundred and thirty something thousand, I think.
Our account is a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. But that doesn't include the money that was already given to the city, etc. That's what we have in our account as of.
Right. So you take, so you take that one thirty, um, there's sixteen thousand and change, sixteen, eight, twenty-two, I believe, um, that the city has, so you're at one forty-six combined, plus the six hundred that the city will do. So as of tonight, sitting here, we're at seven forty-six. So. So.
We should be real close, yes.
We should. So, and we'll get some of those ideas and information, put that together, so.
The one other random note, I checked them all off, we went through all of them, the only thing was make sure that we collaborate as we get on that wall with some people who remitted funds directly to the city, and then from the friends. The friends have their active list of who's gonna be on it, like Regent, I think submitted directly to the city. Just making sure we collaborate those together, yeah.
We have that list and ready to go, so. For, for the most part, the, the last thing I will say, just to kind of get this out of the way, so it doesn't be a surprise later, at the time the playground is under construction, and my, our guess is that's gonna take seven to ten days. Not, not including dirtwork, we're talking putting playground together. Our plan right now is to close the park.
But I was wondering, I'm like, I'm like, how's this gonna work with securing?
Well, the park will be closed during that time. Um, the only other way that you could get around doing that is to fence the construction area, but then you'd have to also fence the laydown area and all the other stuff, and that just doesn't work for us to do, so.
Nobody can walk trails?
Well, we, we would be closed. We would, we would be closed on those days. Now, now keep in mind, this is early May, late April, sometime around there. So, uh, it's not like you're, it's not like it's gonna be that, that, that much of an inconvenience, and you're likely doing it for one week. So that's just reality. But the risk to, uh, onlookers, sightseers, people going through, the risk of theft, the risk of injury, the risk of everything else that goes with that is just not worth, just not worth the risk. I think bricks are easier than pickets. I, I think we're out to get some fence costs and see what those, see, see what all that is. I mean, we have three or four different designs of fence, what that looks like, so we can reach out. I don't, I don't think I could promise that we could have that information total and complete by October seventh.
I'll send you some information on what I have tonight, see if, if that.
Okay. Well, the. She hasn't been to Fairview. Sure, thank y'all very much. So just real quickly, before we take just a quick break, um, so on the, on the agenda, you have three items before you tonight. Um, there are three items that relate to the financials and the bond issue. On the two loose resolutions that you have, it's resolution twenty-eight, twenty-one, and twenty-nine, twenty-one. Those are written as the city manager would have the authority to contract with the, um, the bond rate, or the bond attorney and the financial advisor. Those have been rewritten to authorize the mayor to do that, the bond council suggested that, that be the mayor, not city attorney, or city manager. I don't care, as long as we get it done, so we just need to get that, that signed off on. And on the thick packet of documents. According, according to the bond council, there is a, there's a stipulation in the state code, and the state code requires that those types of identities be signed by the mayor. So I don't, I don't know that. Um, but at this point, I'm just trying to get money in the banks, we can get this stuff done, so I was like, yeah, sure, I'm, I'm fine. So you have those two resolute, those are the only change, it changes that name. Um, and then on this thick document that you see, it authorizes the mayor as well. This thick document is not issuing you debt. This thick document, this is the refunding of the existing city debt that we.